I want to be really clear on this as you look at repurposing. Our committee has never recommended or discussed the closure of a school. We are not looking to close a school. We are looking to move our leased facilities into schools, maybe get central services in those schools, but not closing any schools. I think it's incredibly important that this is driven -- that was Dennis Bloom, sorry. I think it's incredibly important that this is driven from the community. It can't be what the district wants or what we think is best for students. It's gotta be what the community wants. Kathy Buckholz. How long did it -- how did our long-range plan last only eight months? How did we go from wanting growth to closing doors and accepting student and teacher loss as inevitable? Mr. Hepner, please listen to your constituents. Listen to your survey. As your number one goal demands, our classrooms are filled with excellent teachers. Unfortunately, this plan doesn't allow us to solve real problems and hire more. Ms. O'Loughlin, please respect the peaceful protesters of this community. It is their constitutional right to express their opinion when they perceive injustice. They are the same citizens who voted for a new school to help students like your son. Mrs. Burbek, please remember that the planning committee looked at additional space as positive and wanted to sell Central to use the revenue for our district. It was never the intent to displace students and relocate administration to newly air-conditioned repurposed spaces. Mr. Lehman, please end the discrimination against the northern schools once and for all. It has been proven that they cost no more than other schools once salaries are averaged. These schools are not the source of the problems of this district; neither is their extinction the solution. Ms. Pearson, please acknowledge that this proposal does nothing to decrease class size. Class parameters will not change. Specialists will be in buildings crowded with more students but have no more time to give. This plan only ensures we lose at least 1.2 teachers and almost maxes out capacity so that growth is hardly possible. Ms. Buckholz, please honor your words and do what the community wants. Save 3.5 million by recommending a bus terminal not be built. That was not a priority of the planning committee, as I recall. The terminal is listed as optional in the review and comment. Use those funds, as well as the 11% budget surplus, to give us what we voted for. Please vote no. Thank you.
Heidi will be followed by Abby Brown and R. Allen James.
Hi, Heidi Hickie, Stillwater 1002 South, Third Street, in walking distance from this fine facility. I just want to say, I wish that when I had been stumping for levies, I had some of the talent behind me right now that's working against you. Honestly, if there is a way we can turn this ship around, these people are committed, they're passionate, and they're frankly brilliant, I'm a little intimidated by them. All right. A house divided against itself cannot stand. Should you vote yes tonight for the Bold Initiative, you will be responsible for forever changing the fabric and balance of this community for the worse. You conducted the research. The public has spoken. Eighty-seven percent of the respondents stated they were aware of the Bold Plan, with a majority of their knowledge coming from district sources. Your community has become alienated. Even with this level of familiarity, 57% are against it. The community knows what you are doing, and they disagree with this administration's methods. Like it or not, your job is a political one. You need to represent the majority and respect the wishes of this community. Do your job. Scrap Bold. Scrap Bold and start over. The 1.2 million in cost savings you believe you will experience will only be realized in June of 2018. If you scrap this plan, focus on filling some empty seats now, you could experience a lift in revenue starting next fall. Choosing to work towards a solution with a unified community is a lot -- is a -- with a unified community is a wiser, long-term solution. Board elections come next than levies. Are you really willing to risk a divisive board that would have the power to dismantle this plan anyway? Are you actively working towards creating this dysfunction and all that it brings? Are you willing to risk 30% of your operating revenue brought in by levy dollars to save 1.2 million in three years? That is like bending over to pick up pennies while dollars slide out of your pocket. You have our attention now. We offer our passion and vision for what is possible for this great district, and together, let us make this a destination district. It is so possible. Increasing revenue through turning around the district's declining capture rate is your last graceful opportunity out of this mess. Anything other than a no vote tonight is a failure of your confidence in your own schools. Please see that. Anything -- well, I can bleep my place. You can know that as a board who gave you the commu -- huh. You can be known as the board who gave the community a chance to save what is great in all of our schools while innovating attractive options for the future, or the board that devastated and divided the district by not representing and not respecting the community's wishes.
Heidi, your time is up.
What's your legacy? Think about it. Vote no.
Abby will be followed by R. Allen James and Jennifer Severson.
The video has been watched over and over. The puck is flung into the air and sails across the rink. It's caught by a teammate's glove, dropped to the ice, and moved to the net for a goal utilizing the now dubbed "Spinorama." But the next moments are the best of what this district represents. There is no pileup on the ice. Instead, Cates picks himself up and catches the rest of his teammates who have skated to the boards, some jumping on top to reach over the glass. They grab hands with crazed fans to celebrate with those they know, love, and support them. This is Stillwater. Young players now practice the move in their driveways. After the great twirl about that scores the goal, they get up in a rush toward the sidelines, falling into the melting banks of snow to their imaginary fans. They know it, too. They are loved by this community. This is Stillwater. Did you know that when the starting lineup is announced at the beginning of regulation games, these players wait until all names are called and skate out together as one? The younger players on our community hockey teams do the same. I spoke to you about Pony Pride and Possibilities in January. Remember when I said, imagine all secretaries having information about each of our elementary schools to share during tours? Look what Stillwater offers, they could say. If our school model isn't a fit for your child, we can have -- we have these other options for you. Stay in 834. Since the delay in February, Choice 834 has been formed. You need this group on your team. You can send Choice 834 off to the tournament with confidence in making your -- our district proud with the goals coming in as revenue. You each have spent time with the Choice 834 team, so are aware of its potential energy for success. I've always been proud to be a part of our district and all of the honors it receives. Choice 834 members have clearly shown they willingly want to help all schools in our district to be recognized. Their expertise has been offered, even though it has never been sought, and I put my bets on these young, tech-savvy, socially astute parents and media -- and media -- social media astute parents and community members still. My dad passed in December. I spoke at his final memorial service on December 17th, just hours after I learned of the Bold Proposal, or before I learned. I parallel that with this potential loss. For more than just families, closing schools will be like a death, and part of grieving includes anger. This anger won't be at God. On the other hand, those who support Bold will get over your nose much more quickly, kinda like the breakup of a short romance. Their healing will be easier, and they will be able to move on to something else, hopefully something that considers no loss for any. You have the power. It's a huge responsibility. Just remember, all nine of our elementary sites are loved, each an integral and unique part of our district. They represent more than bricks and mortar. Let this be Stillwater. Vote no.
R. Allen James, followed by Jennifer Severson, Nance Purcell.
That's my wife, but I'm the one.
Okay, that's fine. Is that Ryan?
Yeah.
So Ryan will be followed by Nance Purcell and Jesse Farrell.
Am I just clicking on which one?
He has a presentation.
Those are cups of coffee. Anybody need one right now? My name's Ryan Severson. My wife and I are both educators, and we both -- we have two kiddos who attend Lily Lake Elementary, and we live off of Pine Tree Trail in Stillwater. So as parents of two kids and a puppy, actually, we have a fond appreciation, some would argue a need for coffee, a lot. I like my coffee black. That's supposed to be me. That's a lot scarier than it looks. Sorry, guys. My wife, she's -- she likes cream, and that's her, but she's at a school play tonight, so... On Saturday morning, I was pouring coffee for my wife, Jen, and I found myself thinking about closed schools and excess capacity, naturally. It's part of everything these days. As I poured, I didn't fill her mug to the very top. I needed to leave some extra room for her cream and sugar. In fact, I left some extra capacity in each of the mugs. As we have all experienced, if our mugs are full to the brim, it's difficult to handle or manage without spilling or making a mess. In the same sense, having some extra capacity in our schools is not a liability, but should be seen as an opportunity to advance teaching and learning. In fact, I think most people in the room, especially the ones involved in the planning the last few years, would agree with me. This is our new elementary school that's being built, and I'm really excited about this, so I'm not -- it's not a gotcha. It's truly like, this is a plan that I think could work, okay? As you can see, you've chosen a building that incorporates 21st-century learning best practices. The new school has three dedicated, flexible learning spaces. These are not classrooms, but they're areas that can be utilized by teams of students working collaboratively. By hiring architects who intentionally incorporate extra capacity in the new school blueprint, you support a key principle. Extra space, if utilized, is not excessive, but beneficial for our students. In the past -- in the past few years, voters in school boards in Edina, Chaska, Wayzetta, and Alexandria have agreed to spend millions of dollars to construct community schools with extra spaces for 21st-century learning. Flexible learning spaces are being incorporated into other schools, elementary through college around the country as well. Through our voter-approved decision to switch from a junior high to a middle school model, we've created an excess-capacity opportunity for every school in the district. We can convert those empty classrooms into flexible learning spaces with little to no cost. The desks and the chairs and the interactive whiteboards, they're all there. So I just want to remind you, life is better when we leave some room in our mug for a little cream and sugar. Thank you.
Nance Purcell, be followed by Jesse Farrell and Carrie Kleczka. Okay, Jesse Farrell. Jesse will be followed by Carrie Kleczka and Eric Anderson.
Chair Hepner and members of the board, what a mess. But I'm an optimist. What a tremendous opportunity you have tonight, a last chance towards making things right. Thank you for essentially volunteering your time and expertise in public service to this great district. We are blessed with perhaps the most beautiful district in the state. From William O'Brien State Park to the north, to Afton State Park in the south, we are blessed to be part of this group. My involvement with the district began in 1984. I spent seven years as a student at Marine. Fast forward, after living in the west metro for a decade, my wife and I purchased our forever home in Baytown Township, south of 36. We'll be happy with wherever our children get sent to elementary school. We have three. In my opinion, they're all great. On May 12th, we voted in support of the bond referendum that improvements were distributed throughout the district, including at Marine, Withrow, and Oak Park. It seemed like a worthy investment, and it would be, absent the developments over the last three months. I'm disappointed in the current administration and board. Most of you sat here as promises were made about improving Marine, Withrow, and Oak Park, and now it seems that you think it's okay to switch things up. Worse yet, a survey recently conducted confirms a two-to-one margin of opposition to Bold. Lasting damage to trust has already occurred. Are you going to commence the healing process tonight? Why did you even undertake this survey? On the screen is the leadership organization chart from the district, and it's stayed the same for the last few years. I made one revision to it, and then I blew up the top of that chart. There it reads, "Students who can't vote, parents, and citizens of Independent School District 834." I gotta speed up. Is this meaningless fluff? To those gathered here, do we support Bold?
No.
To the -- to the board, are you not beholden to your leaders? Those gathered today and through the last three months? To the board, are you not beholden to the official public notice printed on April 6, 2015, that specified in no uncertain terms that improvements would indeed occur at Marine, Oak Park, and Withrow? Were you intentionally deceiving the public? To the board, you stated in the same official public notice that you will have sufficient resources to fund the increase in costs associated with the proposed facility expansion. And the aha moment, when this proposal was supposedly hatched. Aha moments in an educational environment have a very special meaning. It's that special, often intimate, time when a teacher shares the very moment a child gets it. Don't hijack that special term. Creating economies of scale is a concept most seventh graders in the district already understand, so it's not innovative or creative. Calling it an aha moment only demonstrates one thing, an extreme disconnect with the public you serve. The public is clear. Have you examined the survey results? A two-to-one majority opposes Bold. If leadership had done any genuine public engagement before pushing this through, this moment would be better characterized as an uh-oh moment.
Jesse, your time is up.
I'll be very quick. With the devastation of this proposal, what caused in our communities, the aha moment should have been an oh-no moment. Oh, no, we lied to the public when we promised them improvements at their schools. Oh, no, we lied to the public when we stated that we have sufficient resources to fund the facility expansion. Oh, no. As a representative of the majority that opposes this proposal, as a father, a taxpayer, and member of the leadership team to which you are all held accountable, I'm not here to beg you, you vote no. I'm directing you. Vote no.
Thank you. Can you tell us your name and address, please?
Mr. Hepner, 20 years ago, I was studying for your class. Jesse Farrell, Baytown Township.
Thank you.
Carrie will be followed by Eric Anderson and Shannon Bryant.
Hi, I'm Carrie Kleczka, 1330 Third Avenue South, Stillwater, Oak Park parent. I have been asked to read portions of a letter on behalf of Roland Buckman, school board member, 1976 to 2008, 32 years. Much has transpired since May 2015, the time of the bond referendum. As you recall, accompanying the $97.5 million referendum which passed was the assertion that no schools would be closed, and furthermore, some of the money would be dedicated to the three schools now considered for closure. Now, after a few months into the new school year, the Bold Plan purports to close three schools, contrary to your, the school board's, public declaration made nine months ago. Now question yourself, did you, in your heart and on your honor, your word truly commit to your public statements at the bond vote time? Or were those just soothing words? Your honesty, your integrity are at stake, qualities that I recommend you protect. How would each of you answer about the value of your word? You could proclaim that you were shocked at the per-pupil cost at the three schools as declared by the administration, but that would be evidence that you hadn't studied the past budgets of each school. Rather, I believe you were in support of the district's longstanding value of these small schools and strong communities, as I am, that you supported school options and blue-ribbon schools. Now with little study, at least compared to that, I presume you gave to the initial bond proposal you are changing course. You are trying to justify this in the politically correct name of equity, rather than acknowledging that you are downgrading the system, rather benefit from those schools by drawing more students in through boundary change, by evaluating the reasons behind student moves within a particular school and responding, and by better PR work. You have something good at work in your small schools. Emulate it. Do not believe that your work has been done when your spreadsheet shows you have the right number of students and the right number of desks. Students are more than numbers. I have read that you will transfer the school's culture along with the student. An administration statement, just what is this culture feature rooted in time and place that is to be transferred? Have you wondered how that could be done? After a moment's thought, you realize how remarkable, no, how impossible, that would be. Was that culture transfer promise just something to make you feel good? Your work is not easy. I've been there. Take the time to study the bigger picture, draw on community leaders that know their distinct setting. Work with the community. Thank you.
Eric will be followed by Shannon Bryant and Sarah Laterno.
My name's Eric Anderson. I'm a educator here in the district and a parent at Lake Elmo Elementary School with students in the fifth and fourth grade. I live at 5511 Oak Green Place North in Oak Park Heights. The health of a community is our ability to recognize, incorporate, and leverage divergent thinking, so I'm going to ask that you hear my truth. My truth is different. I support the Bold Proposal. So I'd like to begin by thanking our community for their passion. I'm an emotionally expressive guy. I thrive on that. I love that you love kids, families, and our buildings, and it means a lot to me. I'd also like to thank our district's Board of Education. I'd like to thank our 528 St. Croix Education Association members that have over 5,200 years of experience in public education, and our district administration team. These folks are not novices. They have over 704 years of experience in public education. So as a father, a community member, and fellow educator, I appreciate the fact that you have chosen to devote your lives, all of you, to this work and that you do it well. From my perspective, from my perspective, the superintendent and her district and building leadership team, the Bold Proposal has incredible potential to strengthen the opportunities we provide for all of our students. You've heard all the pros and cons. I'm simply here to talk to you about what the process has taught me as an individual. Number one, I've had difficult discussions with colleagues and friends in all of our current learning communities. I've worked here 18 years. Many of these relationships are decade-long, and recently I've felt that some may be at risk. During these rich dialogues, I've made my case. I've done my best to listen to divergent perspectives. At times, I felt righteous, and other times, I felt truly humbled by hearing someone else's truth. Tonight, I made an assumption that was one-sided and wrong when I was dialoguing with a colleague, and for that, I profoundly apologize to her. Number two, it's my belief that all educators in our district share a value around giving our all each and every day in an attempt to meet the needs of the students and families we come into contact with. That's a truth that I believe, and I live every day. Number three, and this is the hardest one for me to talk about, there's a difference between passion and vitriol. And by vitriol, I mean abusive or venomous language used to express blame or create deep-seated ill-will. Vitriol has no place in our public schools or in our community on either side of this divisive issue.
Eric, your time is up.
Am I out of time? All right.
Thank you. Shannon Bryant. Shannon will be followed by Sarah Laterno and Jim Mahler.
My name is Shannon Bryant. I live in Grant. I am a Withrow parent and a home resident of the Modemide School District. First, I want to address one of the main issues of Bold. The question is, does having larger elementary schools with more support services produce better student outcomes than small, traditional community schools? At a recent community meeting held at Withrow Elementary, Superintendent Ponctrelli cited the newly constructed, large Wildwood Elementary School in the Modemide School District as being a model producing positive student outcomes. However, this new elementary school has only been open for two and a half years, and has -- and reviews are mixed. In 2014, it was reported by the White Bear Press that second-grade boys in the new Wildwood Elementary had a 20-point decrease in math test scores. One of the reasons given was they couldn't read the math questions. The principal of Wildwood Elementary, Mark Hamery, has gone to the Modemide School Board numerous times in an effort to get the school district to reduce class sizes at Wildwood. Bigger is not always better. Positive performance student outcomes at the new Wildwood Elementary are questionable at best. It was also noted that a sizable achievement gap existed in Modemide Schools between white and minority students, even with only one school choice. Second tonight, I want to make everyone aware of a very important public hearing coming up. The public hearing is to discuss the possible consolidation of the Modemide School District #834, or 832, and Stillwater School District #834 to form one unified Central Washington County School District. The purpose of the consolidation is to support short- and long-term financial feasibility and sustainability, address changing demographics, better assist taxpayers, and students. I would hope to see both Stillwater and Modemide School District superintendents, school boards, community members to have open and honest dialogue. The public hearing will take place Wednesday, March 16th, at 6 o'clock here at Stillwater Junior High. The public hearing will be hosted by the Minnesota Department of Education and the Commissioner Brenda Casillas. Thank you.
Sarah Laterno. Sarah Letourneau. Sarah will be followed by Jim Maher and Chris Getchel.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Letourneau, and I live at 1205 Settlers Avenue in Stillwater. The last several months have been difficult, and it has been difficult on me, but I can't imagine what it's been like on all of you. You know, as a child, I grew up where, I came from a small school district, we had four elementary schools, a junior high, and a high school. When I was in elementary school, they made the difficult decision to close two of our elementary schools, and it was because of changing demographics. I will say, and my parents were in town over the weekend, and we talked about it, and none of this happened, none of this, you know, it was a very different situation then. It made sense, but we had a very stable school administration and superintendent. I think we are now living some of our history, some of what has happened that is no choice of any of ours. But I think tonight, we do have the choice to be the best that we can be and make the best decisions going forward. I will say that I am not a fan of the process. I think missteps have happened along the way, but I think when missteps happen, what you need to do is pick yourself up and take a look at what has happened and how do we move forward. We have, we're looking at a plan, most of which I agree with. I do wholeheartedly agree, as a parent who is able to provide services for my daughter outside of the school district because she can't get the services, because we are in a privileged position, and I'm grateful for that. But I think at this moment, we have to be the best we can be for all students in our district, to be the best for the inequalities that do exist between those of us who are privileged and those of us who are not. I will say that through wonderful conversations, that I am moved to just want to put a word out there for Oak Park, and to make sure that we do not forget those kids, and those kids that really need us behind them. I do ask that you vote yes on this plan. I think that we are at a time that we, I'm tired of the cuts, we've been in this district since I've been here, we have been fighting cuts after cuts, after passing a bond, after passing a levy. We need long-term sustainability. I believe that. I believe that this administration team has been the most open and welcoming that we have had. And so I just ask that you really consider all 8,200 or 8,300 students we have, and to talk about the future and look towards what is best for all of us going forward. Thank you.
Jim will be followed by Chris Getchel and Jennifer Bai.
Good evening, I'm Jim Maher, I live in Marine on St. Croix, actually directly adjacent to Marine Elementary. And my simple question tonight is this, can we all just get along? And imagine what could happen if we did? I want to focus on some positive things that I think have come out of the entire process over the past two and a half months. For starters, I think it's clear that you've gotten the people of this community, and I don't just mean Oak Park and Marine and Withrow, but of the entire District 834, you've gotten them engaged. And despite all of the anguish and the long hours for everybody here, this is something to celebrate, and I think it's something upon which the district needs to capitalize. I also want to echo something that Chairman Hepner mentioned at the last meeting that was held here three weeks ago. This process has made those of us in different school communities much more appreciative of the strengths and the challenges facing other schools and other programs within our district. I think we've all gained an education by this, and I think that needs to continue. One thing that strikes me tonight, and really every other night, there's been a board meeting or an informational session or a listening session about bold, are the vast numbers of the bright and motivated people in the room each and every time, and I'm talking about everybody, I'm talking about you, I'm talking about the folks here, and everybody behind me. I'm almost intimidated to be up here because some of the presentations tonight have been stunning, so it's very impressive. What's unfortunate is all these bright and motivated people are all too often working at cross purposes and rarely having a discussion, it's usually just one side talking to the other. There's tremendous potential to leverage all this energy and intelligence for the benefit of the long-term health of the district. Solutions can be found that can gain a consensus and help overcome the district's key challenges. If we need to make schools more equitable, cope with budget shortfalls, improve retention of district students, and attract more out-of-district students to keep our classrooms full, all while addressing other issues that will obviously come up, let's consider this our district's Manhattan Project. The message the community is sending to the board and the administration is, how can we help? Please continue to engage the public, put the best and brightest to work. There are so many possibilities, and now you've got our attention. Please consider a reboot, a do-over of this process. It's time, it's time to consider all the possibilities, view the challenges with a fresh perspective, and be the heroes your constituents are pleading with you to be tonight. Thank you.
Chris Getchel will be followed by Jennifer Bai and Rosetta Peters.
My name is Chris Getchel. I live at 201 Rose Street, Marine on St. Croix, Minnesota. Chairman Hepner, fellow board members, I'm not here tonight to ask you to vote against the bold proposal because it's wrong. In fact, if you believe that it's the best decision for the district, I can probably accept that. However, believing this is the best decision for our district is precisely why you should vote no tonight. One of the main problems I see is the difference between fact and perception. In this case, like it or not, perception is the reality. Your constituents have many perceptions about this proposal, like levy and bond promises that were broken, unethical conflicts of interest, data used to make this decision that is misleading and manipulated, or that you don't want to listen when listening sessions are held as far away as possible from affected communities. There are many more perceptions that I could share about money that could be saved, or retaining students, or numbers that don't add up, but I think you get my point. If you believe that this is the right decision for the district, tonight you need to vote no. The reality is, is that our district is being torn apart. The way this proposal has been handled has deeply divided our community like never before, not just from the three schools you're considering closing, but the entire Stillwater community from Afton to Marine. The damage from this process has already begun. The reality is, people are going to leave this district even if you hope they won't. And who would come back to open and roll their child in this district after this very public display of our dirty laundry that is being talked about around the Twin Cities? This is our reality, and to deny it or think that after the vote, things would have sort of returned to normal is irresponsible. If you believe this is the right decision for our district, you need to vote no tonight and ask for a transparent plan that involves the community. The community wants to be involved. There are a lot of really smart people that live in our community with tremendous skillsets, and they want to be used as a resource. I understand a no vote tonight slows down the process, but if you've done any research in bringing about change to a large organization, you know it takes time and patience. It feels like the attitude is that it's better to rip the Band-Aid off quickly, it will only hurt for a second. But the wound this is creating in our community is not fixed with a Band-Aid, it is much larger and much deeper than that. As school board members, you were elected to serve the community. One of the definitions of serve in the dictionary is to be worthy of reliance or trust. If you believe in your call as a school board member, a no vote today will help to begin the process of rebuilding the trust in the community. If you believe this is the right decision, you need to vote no because there is a better way to do it, but it will take time. Long-term, sustainable change usually does, but in the end, there will be a better outcome that can be accepted by all. I'd like to conclude with this African proverb, "If you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go together." Thank you.
Jennifer Bai. Jennifer Bai, Rosetta Peters, and Kathy Saltzman.
I'm short, I hope you can hear me. All right, hi, I'm Jennifer Bai, I live on Upper 61st Street in Oak Park Heights. Last week, this newsletter hit our mailboxes. On one side is a statement about construction beginning soon, the new school in Woodbury, and on the other side is a message from the superintendent about the school closures. This left me perplexed. One newsletter, one front page, and polar opposite things that are happening in our community. I asked myself before, and I ask myself again, why are we building a new school if we have empty classrooms? Why are we closing schools and building a new school at the same time? I understand that we have a geographic difference, but we have boundaries that can be adjusted, we have capacity studies that can be created to look at marketing for changing enrollment and bringing in and shifting and charter programs, et cetera, specialty programs. I've heard in other presentations that aging populations is the issue, or that the changes in growth because of Met Council's data, and I hear all of that, and I understand all of that, but when it comes down to it, we're closing three schools and we're building another school at the same time, with money just after a bond was passed for $97.5 million that was supposed to be growing us. So why are we closing schools and building them at the same time? Is there another reason why we're building this school in Woodbury? Is it to acquire a different demographic quality? Is it because the proposed light rail service? Is it to prevent Woodbury from annexing an area of Stillwater? Isn't Lake Elmo where there's an enrollment overcapacity in the schools, not Woodbury? Tell me again, why do we need to close three schools? Why does it take closing schools to create equity? How do you know that closing the schools will provide equitable learning experiences for all students? Will there truly be a financial savings? Why can't we improve what we already have? Our families think our schools are great, why don't we keep making them great? I'm not one to believe in conspiracy theories, but after everything that we've learned over the past couple of months, I have a hunch that there's some other hidden agenda that we haven't been exposed to. The building opportunities to learn and discover proposal is bold, but it was not created by learning and discovering. Where were the opportunities for the teachers, students, parents, and staff to learn about the struggles and to discover solutions? The district needs to step back, take a deep breath, then reflect on this process and this execution of the bold proposal. I ask the board to please listen to your students. I was your student, Mr. Hepner. Parents and taxpayers, the majority of us do not approve the school closures. Are you 100% sure that the bold proposal is the only option for our district? I urge you to vote no, and then consider the other possibilities.
Rosetta will be followed by Kathy Saltzman and Larry Lanou.
My name is Rosetta Peters, I live in May Township, and my children go to Marine. I am convinced that courage is the most important of all virtues, because without courage, you cannot practice any other virtue consistently. Maya Angelou. Yesterday, I spent the day at the U of M Discovery Center with my nine-year-old son. At the end of the day, he was diagnosed with PTSD, depression, and anxiety. He is only nine years old. It paralyzed me, because I too share his diagnosis, to a T, and I would never wish upon one of my children the internal suffrage that I go through every day. The doctors at the U informed me that Mike would need some special services and support, and asked me how I liked my school and the support that he was receiving so far. I burst into tears, because those words, services, and support, translate into love in the hallways at Marine Elementary. And yes, I am happy with the love that we receive at Marine. I, it made me look at our diagnosis a little differently, PTSD, trauma, and how children are affected, and I did a bunch of research last night and today, and their movement, children moving from school to school is a trigger, it causes trauma. And so I came here today to let you know that I do not condone you traumatizing my children or any other children in this district with the proposal of bold, because although my son would only move one time, my seven-year-old, my third grader, would be experiencing multiple moves, and that is additional trauma that could possibly trigger PTSD and other issues. I printed off some stuff for you, it's long-term, I don't think that 1% budget savings of a billion-dollar budget is, it's nominal compared to the possible psychological and long-term effects that could harm our children. So please, have courage. Vote no.
Kathy will be followed by Larry Lanou and Sarah Stivland.
Thank you, board. I'm Kathy Saltzman, a Woodbury resident, and I want to note that, believe it or not, for the last 22 years, I have lived, voted, and paid taxes in the Stillwater School District because it's part of this district, and has been for a number of years. In fact, because of the strong commercial development in that area, it lowers the taxes for everybody in this room. So my kids are proud graduates of Stillwater Area High School, and since 1994, I have supported and worked on levy and bond campaigns. I've organized our district's first parent legislative network, I've served on two school boundary committees, and represented this district in the state senate. So first, let me thank you for your public service. It is in making decisions such as this that we expect the most from our elected officials. I appreciate the due diligence you are giving to this most important proposal, and the time and the serious consideration it deserves. Other 834 boards have also faced tough decisions. Because of their courage to do the right thing, laptops led our district into being a leader in our nation. The school day for secondary students was shortened to provide more time for our elementary schools, and all-day kindergarten was offered when state funding only paid for half a day. Did this serve my kids? No, but it was a wise decision and also a wise investment in our youngest learners. So 18 years ago, I sat right here in this auditorium, right, I think, over there, and I was with students, parents, and teachers from Forest Hills Magnet School as we gathered in this auditorium. There were tears, there were... There were tears, there were stories, because we were celebrating an amazing program that was closing. And last year, I worked with parents in Valley Crossing as they learned that their beloved school was being, frankly, dismantled. I know that sense of loss. And while it was difficult, I have learned that a community is not about a building. It is about people and programs. It is our district's staff, our commitment to their students and each child. I know that things can happen in any building in this district. I know that you did not run for office because you wanted to close a school. I believe each of you ran because you wanted to make a difference for 834 students. We have been overspending for the last five to six years, and Superintendent Nelson noted that we were continuing to spend more even before the bond referendum. As our district's enrollment has declined, we've delayed taking actions. And so in voting tonight, I urge you to consider how we make every dollar we spend and how it's having the greatest impact on students and their education. I urge you to do the right thing and vote yes in moving our district forward, and I will support you and the work we all need to do to bring our community back together.
Larry will be followed by Sarah Stivland and Richard Schubert.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Larry Lanou. I'm from the city of Grant. I come here to offer you a possibility to save your $1.2 million deficit annually. And that is by stopping abusive open enrollment. Now, here's how we might have gotten there. Several years ago, and I'm going to read a little bit from Stephen Wogomot. He's a Matamita former school board member. At that time, Ms. Pontrelli was in the Matamita School District. Her name at that time, I believe, was Ms. Wallene. And here's some of the statements I'd like to read. "Disproportionate allocation of resources to Matamita is borne by other schools and students." The next statement that I will read to you is one that he wrote. "A proposal to use open enrollment to increase class size in order to institutionalize inefficiency would be wholly inconsistent with the justification for open enrollment and would breach faith with the community." That being said, she was there when this was happening. The next thing I'd like to read a little bit here is currently Minnesota statute 124D.03 limits the minimum that a school district may restrict open enrollment to 1%. No maximum exists. I am proposing to limit open enrollment students in a school district by grade level to two times the state average, which is approximately 4%, which is what your school district is operating at for open enrollment. My objective is to protect local taxpayers and surrounding school districts from exploiting open enrollment policy. Matamita School District operates at a 32% open enrollment. You probably just cut them a check for over $2 million recently to educate the levy dollars that left your district. Not only did you, but White Bear School District, Matamita, North St. Paul, they all did. The absence of a maximum has allowed ruthless recruitment of students from neighboring school districts. When open enrollment abuse is allowed to occur, it not only undermines the whole system of local finance, but also creates pressure for replacing local property tax entirely with state revenue. Allowing this abuse has produced overcrowded classrooms and lowered school district ratings. I can go on, I see I got a one-minute deal, so I'm going to try to wrap it up here and ask you to call your state legislatures, support a statute to limit open enrollment more than two times. Currently, Senator Chuck Wieger had that opportunity four years. I brought the same proposal to Senator Chuck Wieger. He is the chairman of Education Finance. He chose to ignore it, and you are suffering the consequences. Limit open enrollment in the state level, and you will recuperate your capture rate, some of it, not all of it, but you will definitely get your $1.2 million, and you can keep your other schools open. Thank you.
Sarah will be followed by Richard Schubert and Casey Ann Posh.
Hi. My name is Sarah Stivland, and I live at 11080 Penfield Avenue North in Stillwater Township. You all have got yourselves in a real pickle. On the one hand, if you vote yes tonight, you will be going against the wishes of the majority of the people in this entire community, according to your own survey. In addition, you will dishonor the requests from multiple mayors, city councils, state senators, local businesses, and at least one fire chief. You would be negligent in your duty to fulfill the promises that were made when we all voted for the bond just last May, and you will face a messy lawsuit because of that. By voting yes on this proposal, you will take this district further down a path of distrust, destruction, confusion and chaos. On the other hand, if you vote no, you will look like you don't support your brand-new administration. These folks have been working very, very hard, rolling this thing out to the public. A lot of time and money and effort has gone into trying to shut down our schools. The thing is, closing schools is supposed to be the absolute last resort, when there is just not any other way to make it work. The evidence is supposed to be painfully obvious to everyone, that there is just no other way forward. And that simply is not the case here. We do not have a declining population. We have declining enrollment. And that means you all have not been doing a good job of keeping kids in our schools. The reasons you give for the closures are all related to poor management. And the situation we're in right now is the result of too many years of poor leadership. Year after year of shrinking budgets and changes in administration and shrinking enrollments has stressed everyone out. But enough is enough. You can't just keep cutting your way out of this. When you find yourself down in a hole, you gotta stop digging. At some point, you have to find your way out of the hole. Climb up, build up, fix up, rise up, find the way out. This is what the staff and community members are asking for. Based on some of the focus group responses, as a sample, they've said, "Please just support us. There have been missteps. Develop a long-term plan. Solidify processes so we don't continue to default to the whims of whoever is in charge." Superintendent Pontrelli, you just got here. We need new leadership that will help settle things down and take us in a more positive direction and help us here heal from years of decline and cuts and stress. We haven't even had a chance to get to know you. Why have you taken our school district on this terrible journey? The way I see it, there's only one way out of this mess. You need to vote no on this thing and fix what's been broken. You have everybody's attention. You have more than enough support. Make some magic happen tonight, and let's get to work.
Richard will be followed by Casey Ann Posh and Bob Zick. Richard?
I live at 8822 Stonebridge Trail, Stillwater Township. Our families lived there for over 100 years. My father graduated from Stillwater High School. My aunts, who became teachers in your district up in Marine, Haylake, and that was back in the days when the teachers lived with students' parents, and she went to school and made the fire. But I've had a chance to read your bold, and I want to say that I voted for the bond issue, because I believe students have to have the best education that we can give them, so that they're ready for the 21st century. And looking at how the funds are going to be spent here right now, I see that, I thought it was for technology, like computers, iPhones, stuff like that. And what I see now is the board investing in a 1800 technology, basically, school buses. And I don't understand that. You know, I don't understand that. I'd like to say that I believe the board has lost the trust of the school district and the Stillwater community, and that you should vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Casey Ann will be followed by Bob Zick and John Gould.
Me? First? Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry. Good evening. My name is Casey Posh, and I live 333 steps from Rutherford. Some of you might have heard my presentation the last time I was here. Both of my children started their elementary education at Rutherford, and both of them will conclude their education at Marine. I've been in front of you for three years, letting you know that I believe there is a serious issue in Stillwater School District. And as I read, and I've listened to lots of parents echo some of the same issues that I came to you three years ago and brought up, and I was so disheartened to read an email from you, Mr. Hepner, that basically seemed to think, or seemed to say, that out of all the talking I've done to you in the last three years, that what you have heard is that we're too boastful about our blue ribbon status. I'm sorry, I have been here in front of you, asking from the start of this, to just say no for a moment, to start over. As a person who has a job as a process improvement specialist, this process is laughable, and it's a joke. No, not a single corporation would undertake a process to save and alter their organization in this manner. I have asked nicely, I have asked passionately, I have asked pissily, I have asked over and over, not to say no to building a school, because I think it should be done, not saying no to second, or educational opportunities for second language speakers, because that should be done too. And I haven't said no to getting the nurses and the special aide and the pares that all of our other children need, because that is a must. So I have a question for you. Why is it not a must that my child get what he needs? My children. Why is it that I have to say yes to bold while my children will have inequities? Why is it, do you think, that you have lost 1,200 students to St. Croix Prep? It's because you have two open concept schools within 2.7 miles of each other, and there's not another single closed classroom building in the area? Open concept is needed. It's a great option for those students who thrive in that environment, but you cannot tell me, out of all the research that I have read, that the proportion of students who thrive, and by thrive, I mean they excel at learning, they do better on their test, they love learning more, that they thrive in open concept environment, that the percentage of kids is greater? Because it's not. So we should have an open concept school, but we shouldn't have two within 2.7 miles of each other in some of the most populous areas of Stillwater. And we shouldn't be closing the two closed classroom environments that those students have. You're basically going to shut those schools, and then you're telling us you're going to send our kids right back to the environment that we took them from.
Casey, your time is up.
My kids will not be going back to Rutherford.
Bob Zick will be followed by John Gould and Tina Emerson.
Good evening, Board. I am Bob Zick, 25-year host of the Inside Insight NewsHour, covering local government, especially school districts. I'm also a 28-year former employee of the St. Paul Schools. For the full needed discussion and everything that went on here tonight, I would recommend people watching Valley Access or the NewsHour show we do on Channel 14 on Thursday nights at 8 o'clock. The merging of the school districts, I want to commend, is, the advantage of looking at that is, you're not selling school buildings, you're selling administration buildings and you're cutting out administrators. There's your savings right there. First, I want to say, when are the, where are the required public copies of the material you had up there? That's a requirement. We all should have had what you were looking at, so we could scrutinize what you were looking at. Shame on you. Second, if the administration and school board had been honest and straightforward about closing schools, like everybody said, the levy would have never passed. We have administrators that sit at desk all day, reinvent the wheel and justify their existence, and create disinformation, I might add. Fourth, enrollment decline, you're talking of 70% with what you put up there. Why are you building a new school? You know, I ask, help me understand this now. I think it was Ms. By referenced the Woodbury building of your new school. And why would you be building a school down in Woodbury? I think, Tom, you said that there was 300 Woodbury students down there. That comes out to, well, for $27,90,000 a student. I guess that might be a little excessive. You know, I have to say that when I asked that question, why you're building a school in Woodbury, covering school districts, years ago, Woodbury, a little bit of Woodbury's in the North St. Paul School District. Those people came to North St. Paul, wanting to get out of North St. Paul and be in the Woodbury District, where their students could interact with the children that they went to church with, did Boy Scouts with, and so forth. Like this school district, you don't want to let students go, because it's not for the best of the student, it's for the dollars that come with those students from the state.
Bob, your time is up.
Shame on you. I would tell you, stop building that school in Woodbury. Put it in the middle of Lake Elmo, where you have 10 new housing developments going up, thanks to the Met Council, and 1,800 new housing units. Thank you.
John Gould. John Gould will be followed by Tina Emerson and Allison Sherman. John? How about Tina?
If that person is not going to step forward, I'd like to speak.
We're going to finish our list, so the next one would be Tina.
Is that person stepping forward?
No, but you could stay and speak at the end. We're going to keep moving forward with the people who did sign up. Thank you.
My name is Tina Emerson. I live at 15520 Square Lake Trail North. I'm speaking for keeping Marine Elementary open. I have a girl and a boy twins in the third grade. My experience with Marine Elementary, I'm sure, is not unlike many other parents in the district. I'm sharing this, I feel it is important for you to hear as many success stories as possible. I'm sharing this, I feel it is important for you to hear as many success stories as possible to help you to accurately weigh your decision. We are new to the district. We moved here from Medina. We have adopted twins, who we welcomed into our family at the age of three. Because they were in the foster care system, they bounced in and out of three homes prior to coming to live with us. This caused emotional baggage that we have been helping them unpack for several years. This baggage has caused difficulties in school as well as at home. We lived in the Wayzata School District, which is a very large school district with large elementary schools and several classes for each grade. My twins attended kindergarten and first grade at Greenwood Elementary. My son was diagnosed with ADHD, emotional behavior disorder, and attachment disorder in kindergarten, and was given an IEP. My daughter was diagnosed with ADD and an anxiety disorder in first grade and was given an IEP as well. Their kindergarten year was difficult, but first grade was when they really struggled academically, socially, and emotionally. My twins struggle in large group settings, and they were in the class of 28 and were frequently joined with many other classrooms for large group teachings. My daughter would withdraw and my son would act out. There were many outbursts in my son, and my daughter would sleek away and hide herself or have potty accidents due to the stress of the situation. When we were looking into schools for our kids to go to when we moved to Stillwater, we fell in love with the Little School of Marine and the little town of Marine on St. Croix. We loved the size of it, we loved that there was only one teacher per grade, we loved that they allowed the children to go ice skating, cross-country skiing, and snow shoeing in the winter. When we enrolled the kids in Marine for their second grade year, the improvement in both my son and daughter academically, socially, and emotionally was phenomenal during the course of their second grade. It was a bit bumpy for the first month, as my son pressed his boundaries to find where his boundaries were with everyone at Marine. But they stood firm with him and we worked together as a team to come up with a plan that would help my son adjust to the school, his class, and students. One of the messages that were all...I'm sorry. One of the messages that really resonated with him and that helped him to feel like he belonged was the message that they were all family and that he was part of the Marine family. Both my son and daughter had an amazing second grade year. They both have friends at the school and they truly do feel that it is their Marine family. The staff's love, expertise, and patience with my kids have brought them to this point and I couldn't be more thankful for each of them. That is the difference for me between a large school and a small one, the difference between having 28 students and many classrooms to one small class of 21 students. This is the size school that works for my kids. The Bold proposal states that they want to make right sizing in the schools to ensure that all of the students would have an equitable learning experience. Marine Elementary is the right-sized school for my kids with the right-sized classes.
Tina, your time is up.
If Marine closes and my kid's choice is to be bused to a larger school with larger classes, I will be looking outside of the school district to find a school with a small class size that is right for my kids. Thank you for your time.
We have just three speakers left on the list. Allison Sherman, Patricia Isaacs, and Larry Martin.
First to the board, I want to thank you for your tireless work over the last couple months related to this proposal. I know the time you have individually taken to meet with people on all sides is truly appreciated. As a resident of the district, I am concerned about the growing inequities being seen and experienced by many across our district's elementary schools. This has been ongoing for years. I've spoken to past superintendents, I've spoken to our school's liaison, I've spoken to anyone that would listen. I was left frustrated at the lack of results in addressing our real concerns. These inequities and the challenge they bring are what drove my family to ultimately decide my youngest would be best served at another school outside the district. My family is fortunate to have that choice. However, I am mindful that not every family in our district, in fact, many, don't have the ability to make a choice other than what their assigned school is. The district cannot afford to continue to ignore our capacity issues related to low capture rates, a declining school age population, and serious long-term budget challenges. And just on a side note, I didn't support the school's bond. I think if we hadn't passed that as a community, we might have had a couple other options By making the extremely difficult decision to close three elementary schools, our staff can focus their support more effectively for the betterment of all of our kids. Through creating a consistent student experience, I think over time, there will be opportunity to bring families back into the district, like mine and many others. Without taking action, I fear we will continue to lose families who are on the receiving end of the inequities that currently exist. I know I don't need to tell you all this, but our teachers and our staff are absolutely amazing. The kids who attend the proposed closing schools will be placed into wonderful school communities with loving, caring, and professional staff. If I thought for a second the students at these schools were not going to be well-served, I would not support this plan. I understand that change is very difficult and I don't want to minimize the emotions of the affected communities. But the question I hope you all keep in mind is, what is best for the greatest number of our kids? Educating all of our kids is the very reason why public schools exist. It is about more than my children or any one child in this room. This plan allows us to focus our resources and operate more efficiently in a sustainable manner. This will benefit not only our elementary school children and staff, but our secondary ones as well. I know there are people who will see the situation similarly to me, but I also recognize and respect that there's those that don't see things the same way I do. I hope we can share experiences and have conversations in a civil way, both online and in person. It is through these respectful dialogues that I believe we can find common ground to move our district in a direction of which we can all be proud. In conclusion, I will respect your decision tonight, whatever it is. I will continue to be present and work hard to make this district work better for all kids. I know with time, our community will heal and come together as a whole. Either way you vote, we will move forward. Thank you.
Could you share your name and address, please? Thank you.
Allison Sherman. Lake Elmo Elementary in Woodbury.
Patricia Isaacs. And Larry Martin will follow Patricia.
Hi, I'm Patty Isaacs. You guys have heard from me a million times. Kind of feel like I've been talking to a brick wall, but I'm an optimist. Keep plugging. I've pursued answers since I first learned about the Bold program, just after Christmas. It bothered me that it seemed so hastily formulated and that it was the only alternative that was presented. So I read the district website, attended learning sessions, but nothing that the district has presented has convinced me that Bold is the answer to the district's problems. Just this evening, Superintendent Pontrelli cited lack of trust as a barrier to excellence in this district. Bold has done more to erode that trust than any program that I can recall since moving here 24 years ago. Opponents have been dismissed as a vocal minority. An opponent myself, I worried that that might be the case and I was deluding myself. But the district's own survey showed that it was not. Most district residents opposed Bold. At the top of the district org chart are students, parents, and communities. Bold does not have community buy-in. Also, despite enrollment declines over the past three years, administration salaries have risen. Bold does not address this issue. Through Choice 834, community members have spent hours researching and formulating alternatives. Please, vote no to Bold and give these alternatives a chance. Subject them to the same kind of scrutiny that we have given to Bold. Let the best ideas rise to the top on their own merits. With the support of the community, let's solve these problems together.
I live in Marine. We moved there almost three years ago, so naturally I favor keeping the Marine School When I spoke at the meeting at the other junior high school about six weeks ago, I noticed on the left a large painting of Martin Luther King saying, "I have a dream." And I told you that I had been there when he said that, and I neglected to speak of his beloved community. He was anti-war, not just pro-civil rights and brotherhood, sisterhood, but he believed that once we get rid of our commitment to violence, that we can all live together in love and peace. And so the beloved community, there is a beloved community in Marine on St. Croix and it's called Marine School. A woman stood up and gave this wonderful story about how she moved here from Kansas and escaped an abusive husband. And she had rented a farmhouse out in rural Marine and didn't have any money for fuel oil, didn't have any furniture. And the kids found out at school. And a father volunteered to build bunk beds, and another family bought $1,200 worth of fuel oil so that they could heat the place in November. This is all wonderful stuff and this is love. There's a lot of love in this room. There's a lot of love for the people, within the people, the parents, for their children. And you have to respect that. Marine is Lake Wobegon. Garrison Keillor lived there four years, and he said Marine most nearly resembles Lake Wobegon of any town that he could think of. You seem to think that big is good. This is a big school district. We have two small schools. That's good. My wife and I went on a long trip in our boat, in a small boat, 25 feet, spent a year on it. And it was a wonderful experience, and there were others that went in 50-foot boats. But the Anthem of the Seas cruise ship is huge and it has, it's like a hotel built on a houseboat hull, and it had just almost turned over during a storm when we had that last meeting. So that's a design problem. Diversity is good, it's good to have small schools. We sent our son to St. Paul Academy. He graduated in 97, I think, St. Paul Academy. They have generous scholarship help. They would welcome students from Stillwater. They run a bus from North Oaks and Hudson into St. Paul Academy. If the kids are going to ride a bus to Stillwater, they might as well go to SPA, where there were 85 seniors who graduated and nine of them were National Merit finalists. That's my timer. But it ranked 10th in the nation a few years ago, among the thousands of high schools in academic performance on the SAT score. So generous scholarships, we could not have afforded $27,500 a year for high school tuition ourselves, but they helped us with it. So you all, some of you anyway, might want to consider SPA for your own kids. The buses are waiting.
That was our last speaker, signed up.
We have...I know you wanted to speak, and if there's anybody else who didn't sign up because they didn't know, why don't you go ahead, since you're...please introduce yourself with your address.
Thank you, board members. I came here with, on rather short notice. My name is Lee Woolery. I live at 1920 Pine Street in Stillwater. I do not have children enrolled in any of the schools in question or in the district. I am a professional advocate for children. I've been a guardian ad litem in the 10th and 4th districts of the Minnesota judicial system for 15 years. So I have a strong bias for the welfare of children, but I have no personal stake in the question at hand. I will say that in the last 15 years, I have advocated for children in, I believe, every school in the district and in many surrounding districts. I've worked with their families. The children that I tend to advocate for on assignment in child protection cases and disputed family court cases are children that are in a bad place. They're children that have been damaged, they've had very traumatic life experiences, their futures are in doubt, they have a great deal of anxiety and uncertainty. I take their futures in my hand. They are my greatest cause 24/7, 365. I have advocated in particular for the...for children who have attended the three schools in question, subject to possible closure. In particular, I recall several children who have attended, who I've advocated for that attended the Marine Elementary School. My impression of that school and the community environment is that it is truly a safe place for those children. It is the center of their lives, it is the children of their family lives, it is the thing that grounds that community. That may be the more isolated community among the three that are in question, and I strongly advocate the board to step back, think hard about this decision. I do not see it as serving the children in these schools. I hope that there will be an alternative. It is...there are people who have spoken that have done much more research and thought about the particular question, they have a lot more data than I do at this time. But if we're talking about closing three schools and building a larger school somewhere else, somehow that does not compute for me. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for listening.
At this time, we'll close the public hearing. We're going to take about a 10-minute break and then we're going to come back and we have to have a special meeting to go ahead with our action item this evening. So we'll take 10 and then come back.